Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's Thursday, October 9th. And I'm not sure what meeting is it? What number meeting? I don't know. This is -- we've met quite a lot already this year, but I'm not sure how many times. We'd like to mention the number, just to pat ourselves on the back a little bit.[35.04][35.04](Laughter). I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and we're going to -- the people at the table will introduce themselves for those in the viewing audience who may not recognize us as the Milton Planning Board.
Starting here?
Yes.
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, a member.
Emily Martin, I'm the admin secretary.
William Clark, planning director.
Emily, an S member.
All right. We're going to delay the minutes. We did two sets last time. We're going to delay the minutes until the next meeting. Now, the next regularly scheduled meeting is October 25th, 3rd? Is that right? What I would like to do is this.
Yeah.
As you know, the selectman or the chairman of the selectman has been negotiating away with the Conleys these many weeks. And apparently, they're getting pretty close about the transfer of the town land. But the Conleys said, "Well, you know, getting the town land doesn't do us any good if the planning board doesn't give us a permit." And we had this all solved beforehand by having them file an application, and we would set up a hearing and make a decision, and then they'd know if they had a permit or not. Well, that didn't work out. So what happens is that the time for making a decision on the demolition of the town portion of the building is fast approaching. And the Conleys say, "Well, can you get an idea of whether the planning board would grant a permit along the lines that has been suggested?" And it seems to me that if we were all available next Thursday evening...
How does Master Plan Committee meeting on the 16th?
At what time?
About 12:00. But I'm potentially going to be coming up from our state and making that by the skin of my teeth.
But sort of like you made this meeting by the skin of your teeth.
Pretty much, yes. I also think there's a good reason for that one. Planning board-related business, come to think of it.
Well, you know, Thursday, if we could get a particular date, we would do something similar to what we do on subdivision approval, is we would have the permit, and we would have the -- those -- that bundle of plans and renderings and elevations that you've got some time ago. We'd have it here, and I would run through it for the board, and then inquire of the board whether or not they had any particular issues. It would be just the same as we would be operating on a preliminary subdivision. It wouldn't bind anyone, but it would give the Conleys an idea of whether or not the plan looked like it might fly. And it seemed to me that this was a reasonable thing to do. Not as reasonable as what we originally planned, but still not beyond reason. And it's going a little bit extra for the plan, and, you know, look at it again and see what we think.
But just to clarify, that plan has not actually been submitted as a formal application by the landowners.
Quite right. But what would happen is that the draft permit would be a permit which would be a permit which they had no objections to. In other words, it would be a permit that they would be prepared to attach to an application where they'd make one.
So we would be rendering some sort of opinion on a permit that was written in advance of a formal application.
Right.
Such that were a formal application to be filed, the permit would be attached to that application.
Right.
Prior to any form of public hearing being held.
Right. Then there would be a public hearing on the application. And so the question is, I mean, it is the same as on a preliminary subdivision. As you recall, they come in with a plan, and they say, "What do you think?" And the board can see what they think. And then off goes the developer and comes back thereafter with a definitive subdivision plan, and we have a public hearing. So it's...
Would the public be allowed to comment at this meeting?
I would think that the public would be allowed to comment. It wouldn't be a formal hearing, but it would be a discussion.
It would be a public meeting. We would have a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the permit that you speak of, is it already approved? Is it approved at that point?
No, 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 no. It wouldn't be -- it would simply be -- it would be a document...
A permit pending.
It wouldn't be even pending. It would be simply a document that we'd indicate, "This looks pretty good." Or, "This stinks." But I wrote it, and so I don't want...
So you'd probably prefer that we not say that it's stuck.
I'd prefer you didn't say that, yes.
I have a conflict that night.
Well, we have several conflicts. How about Wednesday? Or when did the selectman ask to decide? We could do it following Monday?
The following Monday would be the 20th.
I have a conflict on the 20th.
You have a very busy schedule.
I have -- you don't even want to know.
21st or 22nd would be the Tuesday.
What about the Wednesdays?
It's the 22nd.
22nd, I should be able to do...
What about you, Ed?
I have a meeting that night. I have another conflict. Sorry.
What about Tuesday? You said Tuesday, the 21st as well?
Tuesday is the 21st.
How's Tuesday look for you?
I'm looking.
The CBA is meeting that night.
Should be okay. Tuesday's the 21st.
21st.
21st, I can do the 21st.
What is the CBA going to be meeting about?
I don't know.
Well, as long as they're not meeting about this particular project.
They're meeting the 15th, aren't they?
I could do either the 21st or the 22nd. I didn't hear if there's a conflict.
All right. Ed has a conflict on the 22nd?
Yes.
41st?
21st.
No, no, the 15th. You asked a different question.
Oh, they do have a CBA.
22nd, Ed?
I have a conflict on the 22nd. I could make it on the 21st.
All right. Then let's do it on the 21st.
That means they give up basketball.
The next Tuesday.
That means no basketball.
What?
That means no basketball. That's all right.
No, you can bring your...
Alex will go one-on-one with you if you do.
Can we do 7 instead of 6:30?
I was going to say 7.
Ah, genius.
Tuesday, 21st at 7.
Okay.
Where will we be meeting? Do we know that already?
We do not. But we will meet in a good place.
What time is it?
7 o'clock.
It's the 21st.
Yeah, okay.
21st, yeah.
Okay. I think that this is a -- that's a -- I think that's good. Now, citizens speak. Anyone want to speak about anything other than Brushhill? Okay. No citizens want to speak. We thereafter are going to meet on the 23rd? Is that right?
We are not meeting on the 23rd.
No, no.
27.
We're going to meet on the 27th, but we will...
Before 10 meeting, yeah.
Before 10 meeting. Okay. Okay. Now, it's 7:08, and we get to the crux of the issue, the Brushhill application. We didn't bring down our projection equipment because we didn't know whether or not you had a slideshow for us.
I do not have a slideshow for you.
Well, why don't you introduce yourself? And let me caution you that you are being recorded and videotaped.
That's never happened to me before. Is this -- you calling the public hearing to order?
Ah, yes. That's exactly what I'm doing. This is a public hearing on an application for a special permit under what section, Bill?
Agenda. I don't have the list.
They just have a section on it.
All right. Under a section of the zoning bylaw...
Section 6L. There's section 6L.
Section 6, subsection L, paragraph 3 and 6.
Entitled...
Condominium conversion special permit.
And we have a application for a special permit and site plan approval?
No.
Okay. For a special -- that's right.
Just a renewal of a special permit.
It's "and modification."
I think just renewal.
No, it is renewal of the special permit and the modification of the special permit.
The original special permit.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So it would be a combined entity that we would eventually approve.
If we approve. And so, for the record, Edward Corcoran. I am an attorney in Quincy, Massachusetts, and I am representing the Brushhill -- mansions of Brushhill Condominium Trust, which is the applicant and the owner of property at 333 Brushhill Road in Milton. This is an application to renew and modify a special permit that was granted by this board in February of 2006.
With the modification?
Right.
And what's the modification?
The most recent action by the board was February of 2006.
Okay. When was the original permit?
June 10th, 1982. Subsequently amended on May 17th, 1984, modified on March 21st, 1985, and again on June 14th, 1990.
So presumably, we're going to wrap all those things up.
Yes, they've all been -- they were all neatly wrapped up the last time you wrote a decision, and I'm sure they'll be wrapped again nice and neat.
Did the revised decision just restate everything? In any event, we'll figure it out.
Yes, it did.
Oh, okay.
The purpose of the amendment in 2006 was to allow the condominiums to add three units to their special permit. Originally granted, there were 17 acres or 18 acres of land. There are 14 units. The condominium bylaw allows up to 17 units. It's a calculus of N minus 1, N being the number of acres. So 18 acres minus 1 is 17. They had built out 14, and there was a request to expand to 17. And the combination of the purposes was to address revenue shortfalls for adequate maintenance, capital maintenance, and routine maintenance of the facilities and the like. In 2006, 2005 and 2006, there was a series of reports and plans that were presented. I have copies of a report prepared by the Burke Group, which at the time identified a series of maintenance, both routine and capital, that were necessary for the property. There were a couple of other reports prepared by an accounting firm identifying the status of their records and an appraisal that appraised the value of the development rights. If the development rights were allowed to be -- if the three additional units were allowed to be created, they would sell those development rights. And there was an agreement as part of the special permit, or the amendment to the special permit, that upon the sale of those development rights, a $40,000 payment would be made to the Milton Public Library. And we understand that there is a need for those funds to support some improvements at the library. Since 2006, almost nothing has happened with respect to action on the permit. And other than that, the master deed to the property was amended to allow the sale of the development rights on or before December 31 of 2014. So the ability to convey those additional rights expires at the end of this year. When the board -- when they have been dealing with a prospective purchaser, purchaser did some due diligence and was advised by the building commissioner's office that the special permit would -- amendment would not be recognized for purposes of the ability to grant a building permit. And so, in his opinion, the special permit had expired by its terms and needed to be renewed. I disagree with the position that he took, but my only recourse is to either file for renewal here or to seek -- to appeal that determination before the Board of Appeals. It just seems to make more sense to come back before the board that heard the matter in the first place, is more familiar with the issues, and understands, I think, more generally, the -- what the condominium conversion bylaw means, how it works, et cetera. I just thought that this was the more proper, appropriate body to appear before. Since 2006, really all that's happened is that we went through a market crash, and they were unable to sell development rights and were not -- and because of that, have not generated that other capital to perform the maintenance as necessary, and the conditions have, in fact, deteriorated with respect to all of the identified items within the report. They have -- I think the only thing that they've really done is replace sections of the fence on the exterior of the property as part of a plan to replace all the fence over a period of time, but they haven't done all of that. The plans would be to take the funds in upon a sale and move forward. There is an active buyer. There was a -- there is no pending purchase and sale agreement as such. Nothing's been signed. There was a signed offer, and it was an acceptance, and there is a negotiation ongoing with the buyer. The buyer is very anxious to know what this board may do. So what I would suggest is that this is -- it is appropriate for the board to grant a relief being requested. It would add three new condominium units. The pending sale price is north of $900,000, so there is some significant value identified, and will translate into a significant value add for the town in terms of tax revenue. I think it is reasonable to suggest that each new unit, once constructed, would be assessed at something, not a million. And three new taxpayers to the town, it's new tax growth without really any impact on town services. There's a private way. It's plowed privately. The town does not provide direct services to the condominium association. All of the -- everything that's done in board of the property line is done and maintained by the association itself. So I would suggest little to no impact, but significant value upside for the town with respect to the addition of three new units. Our anticipation is that if the board acts favorably, we will finalize the purchase and sale agreement. There will be a closing sometime prior to the middle of December. It will mean an immediate transfer to the town of $40,000, and then ultimately, building permit fees and new taxes. I do note that the last action of the board requires site plan approval by the board -- by this board for -- before any new construction. So the new buyer or the development rights would have to come back before the board with a site plan to identify, you know, all the requirements within the board's purview with respect to the siting of buildings, layout of the roadway, provision of utilities, lighting, et cetera, and that that would be conducted in the course of a hearing by the board in due time. So with that, I will open it to questions and comments. Yes?
Does the existing units, town water and town sewer?
I think they do. Yeah, they are served by town water and sewer.
Thank you. You've been referring to them as three new condominium units, but looking at the plan, which obviously isn't visible to the public, these are three single-family homes within this condominium association. Is that correct?
Yeah, each one is a separate dwelling unit. They're standalone. They're not -- it's not more than one unit per building.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And do you -- I know they -- you don't have the plans to have them constructed yet. Are they -- how many bedrooms are they expected to have? Two, three, four?
That I don't know. I think that will really come down to what the buyer would...
At least three, I would think.
It states 35 -- I mean, this is a whole...
3,500 square feet, yeah. So I'm assuming that's what you're...
Yeah, 350 square feet, it's got to be at least three.
Probably a good size.
What else you do with all this space?
Again, the people at home, because we don't have it up, the people at home can't see, so I'm clarifying what is meant by the units.
All right. So that we would get one site plan approval. We wouldn't have three efforts at site plan approval. That would be good. Why don't we hear who wants to testify on this particular application? Pro or con? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Come on up and identify yourself and...
Thank you. My name is Nancy Cohen, and I own the property at 275 Brushhill, right at the intersection between Brushhill and Truman. And I've lived there since 1999. I've got an over an acre. And the neighbor who isn't living there anymore told me, she's lived there for 30 years, that there became a water flow problem after these condominiums were built. It's -- I'm going to use the word horrific, because when it rains and it pours, my property and the two properties between 275 and 330 were flooded. Brushhill Road not only goes down, it is slant, it goes tilted towards the odd numbers. And I represent my neighbors. They know me because of this. They don't talk to me about anything else but this. But when it rains, and I've been to the town, as a matter of fact, a gentleman by the name of Joseph Lynch, who's the director of Public Works, came to my house last year. And he identified what I'm telling you, and he said, "It's a real problem." A dear friend of mine who lives in Co- Coquitouet, Massachusetts, said to me that that would never happen in Coquitouet-Framingham, because the town would take responsibility, Nancy, for one drop of water off the street onto your property. I said, "Well, I've tried. I've lived in Milton now for 15 years, and every single year, I've called, and I've called, and I've called." At one point, they told me I should rake my leaves a little bit more so the water can go down the drain. Everybody knows me on that street. I'm always out there raking. What happened on the first round was that I was denied the town. I built a French drain around my house just to protect the house. There's trees. If you guys know the neighborhood, the property is fabulous. There's a wall, there are trees. I had to call my tree man and ask him if this water was going to affect the trees, because I've got major erosion. There's no doubt when you go, you can see the pathway that the water takes. Brushhill Road, I don't even know the number at the lowest date, starts, and it's like a tsunami, because it's downhill. So even if it's raining normal, the water flows tremendously. Again, as I say, I was told by a neighbor who moved from 285 that she never saw a problem like this until these condominiums were built. I'm here today for the obvious. If there are three more units going in, my question is -- and I heard that there's going to be another meeting on utilities, but I just wanted to just drop this right now and let you know that it's not only my house, but 285 Truman, the blue house behind me, is that. Your entire driveway gets washed out from all this water. I'm not the only neighbor. Then I even joined the Brushhill Society. It's Brushhill Club, whatever. But it's that -- that whole association got so inundated with the air travel over Milton that my concern got lost. So I come, and I'm pleading, because it is a horrific -- I have no front lawn because of it. My acre has been washed out. When I bought the house, it was land. It was grass. I used to have to cut -- I have no grass.
What's your address?
Mine is 275 Brushhill.
How do you -- where does your land sit relative to where this...
Three houses down. 333, you go down three houses.
Further down, and does the water flow in off of Brushhill Road?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I don't have a site map, do I?
A picture's worth a thousand words.
Yeah.
Do you get water in your basement?
I put in the French drain, but I did. I had to. I was getting water in my basement.
The French drain corrected that problem?
Yep. Where does the water go to where I live? And it goes into my neighbor's yard. I've tried to redirect it, and it goes right down the hill into 285.
So she's over here.
You know what a French drain is? It's underground. Yeah. But the surface water is below groundwater, which protects my house, but it's the surface water I have down here.
Alex, this is her property.
Yeah, do you want to... Yeah, and we can show it out after the show.
So that's yours?
Actually, that one has the better...
That's probably easier. She's actually...
She's over here.
Yeah. Brushhill Road is here.
Yep.
And what's that? Is that Truman? If that's Brushhill Road, that's my property.
Truman's here.
Oh, that's Truman.
In 2005, this was still one of your issues.
What?
In 2005, this is one of your issues, was drainage?
333 is right there.
They were supposed to have their engineer work with, who identifies the off-site drainage.
Did you identify the property? Yeah, visualize and understand where we're...
There it is right here. That's 1, 2, 3, 333 Brushhill, right up there in the water.
This is the problem, yes?
Exactly.
And Brushhill runs down in this direction?
That's downhill. And it not only goes downhill, it goes to a slant.
Downhill.
Double down.
I'm not questioning anything you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
From what the way you described it, it seemed like it was down the road. But you think maybe this washes out to the road in addition?
Yeah. Absolutely. In addition...
Where does Brushhill peak? Is it peak somewhere back?
Peaks up there, low circle. You know where low circle is?
So it's quite a ways up.
Yeah, it's quite -- and then...
Beyond this map.
And then it gives the water -- the road gives the water time to build momentum.
This is all traveling downhill, everything I see on this map.
Yeah, and then down into this side of the neighborhood.
Well, that kind of tells them, if this flooded here, you're saying the water in this area would run that way?
It has, from what I've been told, because I've called it...
I'm not trying to question anything you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out if it's more... it's more disdevelopment, or it's more just the design and flow of Brush Hill Road.
Both, but the point is, in addition to the problem, when the condominiums were initially built, it added to the problem.
It seemed to make a.
Because 285 moved, and they said after the condominiums were built in the 80s, it added to the problem.
The problem's more significant.
Has the town went up to it all, like checking the catch basins?
Yeah.
They have?
And I've had them cleaned out.
They have been cleaned out?
I've had them cleaned out.
Is there a catch basin just prior to you or something?
But you know what, with the catch basins, the water is running at such a force, it flows right over it. They even tried to build up my curbs. I mean, this is how much work they've done for me. It's almost a joke. One inch on a curb is not going to stop the momentum of the water. You'd have to build.
They have really high groundwater in that area, too.
We do.
So it's not, actually not being absorbed at all.
Right.
Really, think about it, Brush Hill Road, it's a three-mile-long hill.
Right.
Comes down to that point, so the condominiums also suffer from some of the same drainage flow that comes down off of ground above and Brush Hill Road. You know, I think certainly with respect to the additional development, stormwater management would obviously be, you know, an important part of the site plan process. And understanding more about the hydrology and where it goes and how, where it comes from, and what they can do at least to retain what comes from onsite.
Right.
It's only difficult to think about retaining what comes from offsite, but anything that comes from onsite or crosses their site, it'd be in their best interest to contain it, capture it, in any event, because it's going to, it's going to protect their own, their own values.
And as you say, the details of that come under the site plan review process, because that's where we're actually looking at the stormwater management and how it's being incorporated into the site.
The entrance to the complex is off of Brush Hill.
Brush Hill.
Is there a drain across the road at the entrance of the site?
There's two.
That crosses the entire width of the road?
No, it, it's on Brush Hill Road.
You're saying a regular catch basin?
There are two catch basins in front of our property. There's also one in front of this woman's. But again, based upon the velocity and the flow coming down the hill over, it's called Brush Hill Road for a reason, it comes at a very, so sometimes it actually is coming up out of the sewer system, based upon the volume of flow. We only have two feeders that go into it, onto those two catch basins, are the only ones we're permitted, and that we're, we use them as much as we can to take out, but we have done other remediation in terms of French drains on the property and things like that to alleviate it for ourselves, because we're in the same predicament at the end. The buildings have been there since 82, so everybody wants to point the finger to somebody. And again, as a unit owner living there for 18 years, I've never met you, I'm sorry, and I've lived there for 18 years, so I'm not sure. But, you know, obviously, we're economically challenged at this point in time, and we're trying to do whatever we can. And that's why we're before the town.
Sorry to hear that.
Well, that's, you know, the truth, that's why I'm in front of the board.
So I do, I do think that the notion of stormwater with respect to the further development is obviously an issue that needs to be identified and addressed in the site planning, site plan approval process.
Are there any existing retention ponds for this complex?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, it does make sense to, when you're discussing stormwater, to have a stormwater engineer discussing it. And, but I do think that the issue of stormwater is one you raised. I'm not sure that we have to determine it on this special permit, but it needs to be determined, obviously, on site plan approval, and it seems to me that we should make an appropriate provision in the special permit itself, that when it comes, when they actually make some building plans, that they are going to have to address drainage.
Thank you.
But I mean, well, they, we would, we would, we would require that, but I think we can specifically require it, because you, you, you raise a point that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
The gentleman had his hand up in the audience.
Okay, are we done?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Can I go back to that one for one second?
Yeah.
The impacts coming from that site, of going back and affecting, they may be exacerbating the problem that's in the street. The issue of the runoff coming from this area.
Yeah.
Will be addressing problems coming from this site, but they are not going to wind up addressing the issues coming from the street?
No.
So that you're coming further down, if, if, if you have a three, three-mile-long hill that's coming downhill, you're not going to be able to fix your problem.
But that's okay, at least you're addressing it from.
They can help exacerbate.
It's not adding on, and that's the purpose of me being here.
Anything you pave, it's going to become impermeable, and it's going to add to a flooding problem.
But they have to take care of that part of it.
Well, yeah.
The stuff that's in the street already.
Right.
She's three houses away, so she's not getting just them.
So we'll address what we can through the site plan.
And it's the same thing that you put in, in 2005, in the minutes that I gave you before. This was the same issue then?
You just, you just, knowing there's an existing problem, whether it's caused by this development or not, any new development, you wouldn't want to add to the problem.
Right.
Exactly.
But in 2005, you had John Thomas of Beals &amp; Thomas supposedly working on the situation?
Yeah.
If we still have problems, I don't know that what he did worked out. I know that you're going to hear comments from somebody from the other side, who's going to tell you that it didn't work.
Well, I think what he did or what he didn't do, I don't know, we could ask him.
But certainly for the three new units, it must be addressed.
Yes.
So, and we'll make sure we do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Doug Passle, I live at.
You need to be.
I live at 220 Beacon Street. With my cousin Linda, she's lived there basically her whole life, and she's in her 50s now. And her parents lived there for 60 years, and she had purchased the house from them, and never any water problems until the units went in, she told me. And again, same thing she did, French drain, had her driveway regraded, all this stuff to stop the water. And she was at that meeting in 2006, she couldn't be here tonight because she's a nurse and she had to work, and she couldn't get out of it, so she sent me instead. So I just wanted to chime in for her. It's the same issue, it's, you know, I'm not copying myself, I'm in construction, so I'm all for the buildings, but, you know, I'd like to see, the problem was supposedly going to be taken care of in 2005 or '06, or whenever it was. It's eight years later, and it still hasn't been taken care of, so, that's all. And then the other thing she was wondering about was, who does she contact at this condo association? There's no way of getting a hold of anybody, like, there's no head.
Who's the head?
To discuss issues.
Who's the head? We've got the head right here.
Scott Sherman.
She's tried to talk to several of the neighbors, and it's.
And she's tried to climb the fence and hasn't been able to get in?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And no one seems to know anything, kind of, so.
Well, we, water is, is a, an issue, and we will, they're going to, whoever the developer is, is going to have to have a good.
She lives right behind, right against the condo association. The fence actually does a, an L around her yard. And where the new units going in is going to be right against her yard again, on the other side of the fence, so now there's going to be two.
All right, well, so.
You can see her concerns, that's all.
Presumably, and you know, definitely, it should be an improvement.
Yeah, it's open anyways, if it goes through.
That's what she told me, well, good.
She actually came in yesterday and wanted to address stormwater, the fencing, and tree maintenance, and who to call.
You got the email, then?
Yep.
Why don't you identify yourself with your address and your, your contact info?
My name is Scott Sherman. I am one of the trustees, and I'm the current president of the mansions at Brush Hill. I've been in that, I've lived on the property for 18 years. I have two children who live there with me as long as, as well as my lovely wife. My office number is 617-267-1100. And I'm relatively accessible, I work out of the property, I'm there almost 24 hours a day. I believe I did speak with your uncle.
My cousin and my uncle, yeah.
I'm sorry, your uncle is, is the one who was able to come knocking on my door and asked a particular question, which I responded to. So I'm surprised he didn't give you my business card, because I had given it to him when we had spoken and met face to face.
Well, that was in regards to trying to get your easement to do this project, which.
Uh, no.
That's what he told me it was about, so.
There's, there's no, no easement that we're doing.
That's what you were asking for when you came by there. I'm just telling you what he told me, I don't, I'm just.
All right, well, in any event, you've now got contact info.
Excellent.
And what else?
Other questions?
Like you said, the tree issue, we had a tree fall on the house, and they basically said it was our problem. Out of their property, it almost went through the roof and broke the foundation and.
Was it their tree?
Yeah.
Well, that, of course, is a matter that you can resolve.
I'm just the messenger, I don't even want to.
All right, in any event.
I just wanted to voice her concerns.
We can't, it does seem to me that liability for the tree is a matter of law, but not planning board law.
That's all water under the bridge.
So to speak.
So we're looking to get the rest of the water under the bridge and around the house and.
All right.
In its proper place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who else wants to be heard on this application?
Right behind you.
Now, I think that we will, we can take a vote on it, and then next Tuesday, we probably could sign it.
Two Tuesdays from now.
What?
Two Tuesdays, not next Tuesday.
What?
Next Tuesday, the 14th.
Next Tuesday's the 14th.
You mean, two Tuesdays from now, our next meeting.
Is it, it's a week from then?
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
21st.
21st.
All right, well, we still could do it on the 21st.
We could definitely do it on the 21st.
But it seems to me that before we go to all the trouble of preparing a special permit, we should see whether or not we have the votes. And it would be, it would be to the effect of what you had seen the last one looking like, plus a, a little section on drainage.
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board approve the special permit for the renewal of the previous special permit, subject to additional requirements related to stormwater drainage and management.
Yes, I think that's a.
So we'll have an opportunity to approve the final plans?
Yes.
Right. For the development as a whole.
It seems to me, though, that this research they have to do involves the town of Milton as much as it does the private land, too.
Seems so.
Yeah, is there some way we can pass on to the DPW that we're concerned about the amount of water in total that's rushing down Brush Hill Road, and maybe, you know, we don't, we don't have any authority over it, but.
We can, we certainly can ask them, when these plans are, if we can ask the engineer what can be done to, in conjunction with the plan we get.
I think that's reasonable.
Can we get somebody from the DPW to visit one of our meetings?
That says what?
To visit.
To come to one of our meetings and.
I got his card.
It seems to me that maybe the, whether the engineer is, will be in contact with the town, and they can come back both and report to us.
Yeah.
At the same time, that would make sense, yeah.
That, that's actually going to happen when they file for site plan approval, right?
Yes.
All you're doing right now is just approving that they can build the three units.
Yes, yes.
The site plan approval is when we need to have the engineer.
They can build them once they get site plan approval.
Right, so you want the engineer, when you do site plan approval, not right now.
It has to be done, it has to be done in conjunction with the town, that's what.
Yes, but at site plan approval.
At that, we could, we could mention.
Somebody from the DPW might be able to educate us on the nature of this problem, whether it's beyond this development or.
At the site plan approval meeting.
Right.
Yes.
And the engineers are always, always good at that.
Yes.
Okay, we have the motion, we have the second. Do we have a discussion? Do we have a vote? All in favor? All right. Okay, so we will have a written decision a week from Tuesday.
221, yeah.
Would you like me to prepare a draft for your?
Well, we sort of have a draft, but you can, you can put something on the computer, because it may be, it may predate our, it may predate our, what we have.
You have, you have the amendment.
I do.
There's the other two that go with it.
Oh, nice.
And they've got all the pieces.
All right, this is perfect.
And it has the same ones.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's see. I'm going to report on our townhouse condominium working group. The working group got together, and we discussed condominiums. It was, it was interesting. Kevin Keating suggested that there are 600 two-family dwelling units in Milton, and that if they were to be converted into condos, the result would be a significant increase in value, and it also might reduce pressure on the schools. So, we're going to, there are other problems. I mean, when you have two units, when you have a two-person condo, you know, when you take a vote as to what you're going to do, it's, can end up, it can end up.
Stillmate.
Tied. In any event, we're thinking about, and we're going to, we're going to meet again in early November, we're going to eat, meet once a month, and we're going to, maybe, if we're lucky, get Hoyt Cousins, who was a planning board member some time ago, and has been doing condos in Utah at ski resorts, to come in and offer some thoughts on this, because that sounds, if we could, you know, build up our ski resort. In any event, we're, we're working on it. It was a good meeting.
I look forward to the chalets.
Okay, now, yes, chalet, the chalet architecture, they could be bed and breakfast as well, so.
I don't see why not, Alex, that would be perfect.
All right, now, we're going to not discuss, oh, I went to the warrant committee, and they were happy enough with the signed bylaw, with the signs that four square feet, not three, and.
Excellent.
And they also recommended the St. Pius Stoning.
Great.
And, so that was, that was good. Master plan update, and that's the last matter on our agenda, unless Mr. Clark wants to do a report.
Why don't I jump in with the master plan while he considers his options?
Well, he considers his options, yes.
We were at the Celebrate Milton on Sunday, which was excellent, it was a gorgeous day to be outside, saw a couple of planning board members passing by, but Daphne, Taber, Healy, and I were all handing out questionnaires. We got 67 responses from people who stopped by, a few who promised that they would send responses in, so if you're watching, you have my email address. We will have two more open houses, one at Fuller Village on October 19th, from one to four, that's a Sunday afternoon, and one at the public library in the Keys Community Room on October 25th, also from one to four, and that's the weekend before town meeting. And at that, we will have the boards that have been up at town hall and library, and the library all summer. We will also have the same questionnaire we had at Celebrate Milton. This questionnaire has 20 implementation steps, and we're asking people to identify their top three. And I haven't actually counted up the ones from Celebrate Milton yet, but I will be very interested to find out what have been, which ones have been identified as the top three. Speaking of comments on the master plan, comments on the current drafts, which are on the website, are due from both the master plan committee, and if you guys, excuse me, would like to submit them, they're due tomorrow, October 10th. These comments will be put. These comments will be put together and after the public process closes, which will be our last item of the public process, is town meeting on the 27th. The final plan will be revised, the draft plan will be revised to create the final plan, which will be submitted to the planning board sometime in November. So we're waiting to see how many comments there are before I know the date. And that's where we are. We're getting very close to wrapping up this process and getting a final report. It's been an exciting process.
Did you say you got 67 comments on Sunday?
67 or 68 people stopped by and filled out the questionnaire. So it was, it was great. I was really pleased. And we had the map of the, some of the suggestions mapped out across the town, and we had the map of the civic center that we've been talking about for this area because that's gotten a lot of comments from people, mostly pro. And so that, those two maps really drew people in. Then when we saw them, we handed out a leaflet on what the master plan was all about and where it is on the website, and then the 20 implementation steps and choose your top three. And we offered the ability for people to add additional comments to that questionnaire, and they have done. There's some additional things, so I'm looking forward to going through those this weekend. So, but it was, it was a great turnout. I'm hoping for something similar for the open houses. It's one of the reasons we're doing one on a Sunday and one on a Saturday. So the open house we did in June seemed to be a little bit, being a Saturday morning, there's a lot of sports. We didn't get as much participation, but keep an eye out for it. And thank you, by the way, all for your support and being at the forum on Monday night, even though there is a Patriots game. So, that's my report.
But it was a Patriots game, not worth watching.
Yes, well, unfortunately, you didn't know that unless you'd already watched it.
Do you want to tell them what we were tonight?
Oh, yes, of course. So the reason Bill and I made the meeting by the skin of our teeth is, if you remember, I'd mentioned at a previous planning board meeting that students from Tufts this semester and next semester are looking at two areas of Milton coming out of some of the suggestions from both the master plan and other master plan initiatives that we've done. So for this semester, they're looking at East Milton Square and taking from where the parking study left off, taking in all of the comments and recommendations that have come in through the master plan process and saying, okay, if all of this is done for the parking study, what next? How do we draw people down to East Milton? How do we make this an environment that will attract people to walk there, to shop there, to be there? And so the kickoff for that was today. Bill and I were actually at the class at Tufts University with Daphne Politis and explaining to the students what the conditions in East Milton Square were. They're going to pair off into groups. They're each taking an element of what we presented. So some are doing streetscape, some will be doing traffic and transportation, some will be doing urban design. They'll come together with projects, and I let them know that we would be happy to host them for a meeting to explain what they've come up with, so.
Good. Were they, did they look like a good crew?
They looked like a very good crew. They asked some good questions. It's a range of undergraduates and graduate students. Most of them are in the urban and environmental planning department, but there are a couple that are outside that are taking the class. So I think we're going to get some thoughtful responses. Looking forward to it.
All right. Bill?
Been working on the planning board budget. The 131.
Well, that's a big item.
I didn't know the planning board had a budget.
You don't have to fill out those forms. Emily thinks it is. Her budget, her pay comes directly out of that budget, so. Yes.
That's true.
I've been dealing with the 131 Elliott issues, the Zero Central Lab, which is the town's property. I have one wireless telecommunication application that's waiting for a meeting. I have two sign applications waiting for a meeting. Working with Mr. Hurley on the selectmen for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which I guess we set up next week. Master plan issues, some mule and rink issues, and with the library. I get to meet with them tomorrow morning. They want to talk about redoing their front entrance since the tree came down. They want to go back and address the issue of the turnaround within the parking lot itself. The library came to this board and did a site plan, I believe it was site plan approval, and I don't know that they really had to, but they did it anyways. And one of the issues was that the tree had to stay. As it came down, the tree couldn't stay. There were two letters from two different abriss saying that the tree was too far gone and needed to come out. The library has since said they're going to replace two of the trees they took down. One is the one that you people talked about, which was the beech tree. The other was a sugar maple on the other side. Both were throwing limbs, so it became an issue of public safety. Now that that tree is gone, they would like to take and make the turnaround within the parking lot. I'm not sure that this board wants to hear more of it, but if so, we'll bring them to the next meeting.
Well, I think you should.
Good.
Good. Well, that was an excellent report. Anything else from the board? If not, I have a motion, and.
No.
Yeah, well, I heard a motion to adjourn, and.
Oh, I heard it as well.
And all in favor?
Emily, Emily.